Okay, good evening and I'd like to welcome you to the January 9th, 2018 Select Board Meeting. Jan, has the meeting been properly worn?
Yes, it has.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Madam Chair.
At this time, I'd like to offer time for public participating for anybody who would like to speak on something not on the agenda. No? Anybody? Ron's?
Maybe from somebody from the high school board.
I'm gonna let that slip on by. Okay, great. So then we will just go ahead into unfinished business and Peter, can you summarize where we are based on last week's actions?
Sure, I will. And before I begin that, if it's all right, I'd like just to note on behalf of Kate that you're the chair this evening because a family matter has come up that she's dealing with. So that's why you're chairing the meeting and we all expect Dave's calls any minute now. So hopefully he'll be able to join us this evening. Summarizing from last week, we just want to make sure that we've got it right. We covered a lot of ground. We did it without motions. If I led to an unnecessary amount of confusion because of that, you asked specifically, should we take motions? And I said, no, I don't think that's necessary. But there was some, there were some questions that came up after the meeting. So we thought it would be good to start tonight by just making sure that we clearly understand what you did last week. And here's what I have.
That would help us, too.
What I have is you approved adding the $26,000 of additional funding for human services as recommended by the Human Services Review Committee. That will be a separate item, it always is a separate item, on the representative town meeting warning, but it will also be in your budget that you see when we bring you a final budget. The same with Green Up Day. You added $300 to the budget that you will recommend and you will have that be a separate warning item on the representative town meeting agenda. Same, or warning rather, same status for the $1,000 that you're recommending for the Southern Vermont Watershed Alliance. It will be in your budget and it will be a separate representative town meeting item. And finally, an item that will not have a tax impact, each of those others would, but would be a use of fund balance, $20,000 for the skate park funding. So that would be reflected in the capital program that you're going to further review this evening and in the use of fund balance line item, which as of right now, based on everything that has happened in the two and a half months that we've been working at this, would be a $770,000 use of fund balance this year. But that's subject to the further review you're going to give to that tonight and especially as you finish the work in the weeks ahead. Okay? Does that sound accurate? Is anybody concerned about that or is that, do you agree that's what you did last week?
I think that's what we did.
That's what we did.
Okay, great. So that leaves us then in a, at a place in the process where, subject to your final balancing of use of fund balance and property taxes, a property tax rate increase currently estimated at 3.92 cents as we enter tonight's discussions.
Great. Okay.
So that's where we stand right now.
That's where you stand right now going into the discussion of capital items this evening and the one additional item that is on for discussion this evening won't have a, likely won't have a tax impact depending on your decision about it, but that's the SEVDS item.
Right. And I know this really doesn't have anything to do with this budget, but, and forgive me if I've forgotten it, but any idea what the school is going to be around?
I don't. There's going to be an increase because of the, what's coming down from the state. Perhaps the chair of the Finance Committee has more details. I don't know the details.
I haven't heard.
I don't have the revenue at hand. They're facing some very difficult budget decisions.
Yeah. Them too, huh? Me too Brutus.
Yes, indeed. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the capital projects and equipment and it looks like we have a staff proposal including the fire aerial ladder truck.
Right, so you asked that we bring you the full recommended capital, the capital request that was included within staff's proposed budget. So that is attached behind my memorandum in your backup for tonight where there's the four projects, the annual projects for street paving and improvements and sidewalk repair and replacement, as well as the skating rink energy savings and the Gibson-Aiken Center roof and insulation project. So those are the four projects we've proposed. The capital equipment purchases that are proposed are computer hardware purchases, the ladder truck, which has received a lot of consideration and will receive more this evening, the replacement of the Suburban or possibly a Tahoe, but that scale vehicle to pull the trailer for the police department, as well as two cruisers for the police department, a half-ton pickup truck for general maintenance, a one-ton pickup truck for Public Works, and a dump truck and an excavator also for Public Works. These are all items that we have discussed previously, reviewed on a prior evening, but since you have before you the pending decisions regarding the ladder truck that was included within staff's recommendation and the second sidewalk plow that has also received a lot of attention through the budget process that was requested by residents and for which you've received information outside of our proposed budget, since you'll be considering those two this evening, you asked last week that you'd be able to have that in the context of the overall capital program and so that's the material that's attached.
Okay.
I guess I'll add if I might that the third item, item C on the agenda under capital projects and equipment is the downtown streetlights. You know from the backup materials that we provided, but just for the public's benefit, I want to advise, we just don't have enough information to give you a recommendation and detailed support for that this evening. So that's not to suggest that we'll stop working on it and that there's no action that can be taken until a year from now. It is to suggest that when we have additional information, we'll bring it to you and it likely won't be in time for you to be able to incorporate funding for specific lighting improvements in this proposed FY '19 budget, but rather that that'll be something we'll continue to work towards. And if there's some low hanging fruit that we can implement in the year ahead, we can go ahead with that. Otherwise, together we'll work towards identifying what a capital project looks like around increased lighting for the downtown.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not even going to consider that?
I mean, you can discuss that and anything else that you feel you should before you make final budget decisions, but we're not in a position where we can bring you the additional information you had sought. We've reached out to the parties that can be helpful in that regard. We've received some, but not all the information we need and we haven't assimilated it in a way that we feel we can make a responsible recommendation to you. If you recall, we were trying to identify a low-cost solution. The original thought that we had from staff was $20,000 would buy some expert consulting on this that would sort of define a broader project. And your reaction to that was in the full mix of things going on with this year's budget that rather than studying this in that kind of depth and spending that kind of money for the help, that let's kind of do the research ourselves and look for a low-cost solution that could add some material amount of light on the sidewalks in particular, but in the downtown area. And so we are continuing to look at that, but we don't have additional information for you at this point.
Okay, well, as long as, you know, throughout the year, things come up and we're able to kind of be creative. Tim had mentioned solar before. I had mentioned holiday lights where obviously you talked about the arms, if we could just keep looking at that.
Absolutely.
It obviously at this late time makes sense that it's not going to be ready in time for the budget discussion, so. Do we want to dive right into talking?
Yeah, I think we'd particularly like to be of any help that we can in your further consideration of the ladder truck and the sidewalk plow. And if you have any questions or want to have any additional discussion about any of the other items in the capital plan, then we'd be, can address those as well.
You guys want to open up discussion on the fire truck? Since it's numero uno.
I think maybe we should, yeah. I'd like to hear from, once again, and this is just me, from the people that it.
I think it would be a good idea.
Yeah, that involves them all. And I think all of them have a, have some input on it, so.
Yeah, however many would like to come to the table, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Because that's already included in the 3.92.
That's correct. The truck is included, any, and everything else that I listed that's also the staff's recommendation that came along with the budget, that's all included. The one item that you would consider on the capital side this evening that is not yet in the budget is the sidewalk plow.
Which after, I'd like to hear from Steve on that in conjunction with this.
Agreed.
To get Public Works' input.
So you know our saga on the ladder truck. We are presently the owners of a 1994 ladder truck that we bought used and I don't think either, excuse me, either one of us feel comfortable sitting here telling you that it's going to last one week, one month, one year, 10 years. We don't know. We haven't brought this truck from purchase to today, so we don't, or from being built to today. So we don't know what the maintenance schedule is on it. We don't know how well it's been taken care of, only what we've received from the department that we bought it from. The truck is 24 years old. One of the things that was mentioned was possibly doing a refurb on it. I would recommend against that because it, again, it's a 24-year-old truck and when you start taking it apart, things may not go back together the way they should. It's gonna, you know, we could get a quote to refurb it and we could run thousands of dollars over that with a truck of that age. What else would you like to know, John? You know, I think my biggest fear sitting here in front of you is, and like we've told you, is if we didn't believe that we need to move forward with this, we wouldn't be sitting here. We understand it's a huge purchase. I want to keep our capital replacement schedule intact. And if this ladder truck gets pushed out now, it means, it gives us a domino effect. And we mentioned that we have an engine that's been due for replacement. We've been kind of bumping that out, that is coming right on the heels of this ladder truck. And my biggest fear is I'm sitting here in front of you a year from now saying, the ladder truck is grounded and the engine, you know, has a cracked frame. We have to replace both of them. I don't want to put any of us in that position, obviously, and, you know, I really feel that it's important to stick to our replacement schedule so we don't get in these situations anymore.
Can I add one thing to that? So on that very specific point of the cascading impact of postponing a decision like this, the, the impact would not just be to the fire department's replacement needs, but also to other departments as well. So an item that costs a million dollars like this one, or $950,000 at a revised estimate, crowds out multiple additional pieces of equipment that other departments need. So even with the borrowing, you know, we try to maintain a practice of not borrowing for the purchase of equipment any longer and we have maintained that practice, but the magnitude of this particular purchase, if we do perceive that this year would require, that we borrow half, that we would fund half with cash. But even that half with cash at $450,000 is, you know, the value of several other pieces of equipment that would be needed by other departments. So pushing the fire truck off till next year means having to find a way to buy it next year and other pieces of equipment that would be needed by other departments in the town that would be that much harder to buy next year.
So just a quick, Peter, is this a separate item when it goes before town meeting or is this lumped into capital, or how is this?
We presented it to you as part of the capital program, so it would be part of the, if you approved it as we recommended it, it would be part of the Select Board's budget that you're recommending. And that will include a list of capital items to be funded as a transfer from the general fund to the capital fund.
But it can be discussed at town meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I know they can't do a line item.
Right.
But they can tell us their feelings on it?
Of course they can.
Okay, right. And again, they can't say, you have to take out, you know, the ladder truck.
Right.
They can say, we're gonna.
Reduce the budget by a certain amount.
We're gonna reduce the budget by so much and that just gives us an indication, you know, just like with the police fire station a couple of years ago.
That's correct.
We're not gonna.
That's right. Anything in the town's budget that you recommend to town meeting is fair game for them to discuss in detail during the town meeting. You're right that there isn't a line item veto authority at town meeting.
Well, just because I've been the biggest PIA on this, I've had, I've thought about this a lot in the last couple of weeks and the fact that it can go before town meeting and the whole body, I'm not going to balk it anymore. I was dead set against it. Look, guys, you know this. You guys are in good positions in town, but there's a lot of people that are in good positions. You know, so 3.92, it's a big nut to crack for some people. So that was my biggest concern, but, you know, talking to a lot of different people and, you know, and I've gotten, I've gotten it on both sides, good or bad. But, and this may come to a shackle to these guys, but I just, I feel at this point, let the body discuss it. I think we can propose it. They, I'm sure they know my feelings on it. I think they know some of the board's feelings on it, so I think this is a, this is a question for the body and not just us. I mean, that's how I'm, this is a big, this is a big item and they will discuss it. And they should. And then let them be the good or bad guy. You know, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's a no-win situation either way. I mean, it's a, it's a tough decision. It's gonna, it's either going to impact, you know, people that are right on the border or we're gonna have a ladder truck that's gonna service us and, you know, and be an asset to the community. But, I mean, sometimes with just five of us here, you know, you try to make a rational decision and you try to give it as much thought as you can and try to please as many people as you can, but this one is, this one is tough. Again, on the backs of $7 and $8 million for new buildings and, you know, buying the truck last year that we didn't really expect to buy and so that's, those are my thoughts.
I appreciate those. I think those are smart thoughts and prudent thoughts.
I don't know, I mean, it's just.
You said it, there's five of us here and there's a reason we have another 130 whatever, because we're not supposed to have to. I mean, we need to make our recommendation and they do need to discuss it.
Well, it is our job.
It is our job.
I know it's our job, but some of these things are, I wish there, in some ways, I wish there was a town meeting. You know, a full town meeting, you know, like a lot of places have, and I know it's impractical. I love representative town meeting. Sometimes it doesn't represent the whole town, but for the most part, I think it does. So, anybody else?
Tim or Dave, you want to?
Well, I, I think the thing that's most important is to try and keep up with, you know, heading toward a goal of getting half a million bucks a year spent. And it's kind of a, take a chance and wait a year and maybe we'll have a little bit more that we can put down or not. So that's, you know, one thought. The other is that I've never really, I mean, I understand the League of Cities and Towns recommends a 10% reserve fund, but I think there are times when it's okay to, unless you see something coming down the road, you know, it would be stupid, I think it's okay to go into that. I think the difference between not having the truck and having the truck is really, it's no effect on the tax rate. It's whether we go into the fund balance, which takes it, just for me, it just takes it out of even the point of consideration. It's like, well, sure, let's use a little bit more in the fund balance so we can get it. The 3.92 is still a problem.
It is.
That's, you know, that's probably the largest increase we, at least you and I and Kate put out in four years or more. We had a year where we didn't go up at all because we dug into the fund balance just a little bit, but just so we could have a little increase here. The things that I worry more about are the 60 grand that we're gonna have, if we can't get a grant, that's going to be in the budget every year for the next 10 years to pay that loan. And I just, and the $99,000 and the additional coming costs at the pool, that's just kind of, we did a couple of things to the pool and it's kind of nice, but now it's back on the, you know, that's already been dominoed back here and who knows, you know, next year if it'll go back to yet another year. And the big one, which is the pool house, which, you know, it still functions and we don't have to do anything, but so does the ladder truck, you know, so.
Pick your poison.
Tim?
What's that?
Pick your poison. Yeah, yeah. So, well, I guess that's enough.
Tim, anything you'd like to?
Sure. The 1994 ladder truck is the same truck that we approved the purchase of just how many months ago?
Not many.
About three.
Three.
So, and we really appreciated that as a board, that you guys really, you did the work and you found this better truck. Let's not call it a great truck. And I watched it the other day, you were doing, somebody was doing the sort of up and down. It was obvious you were doing some tests on it. It seemed to be fully functional. Would you describe that truck as being fully functional now? Tonight?
Trick question.
No, it's not a trick. It's important for my.
The truck is fully functional in the sense that right now it seems to be running good, the aerial is operating properly and it's operating good. Again, I think what we, what we tried to express in one of our earlier conversations was, again, we don't know anything about this truck, which bothers me. And the other thing is this is not a truck that we would go out and buy today. It's not a truck that's built for this town. So do we have an aerial that we can use on the upper floors or for rescue work or whatever? Yes, we do. To use that truck the way we would have used the 1991 version, we can't do that. Because there's no water tank on it, there's no pump on it. So it's, it's, the truck that we have presently would be strictly for the use of the aerial ladder. It would not be able to pump any water, it doesn't carry any water. And that's a big piece of that 1991 version for us because we were, we had a backup. When we got busy, we could run that as another engine.
Well, take the ladder off the newer one and put it on the older one.
The other thing, Tim, is, is, when I first started back in 87, we had three more trucks than we do today. So we've reduced our fleet by that much. And by now, not having this pump on this, on the aerial, for instance, say our other pumper's are out, had a call or different calls or something in this, in the aerial truck, the old aerial truck we could take and go if it was another fire call because it had a pump tank on it, we could operate the same way. Versus now, if we're out with an existing ladder truck and we come up on a fire or we get called to fire and the other trucks are tied up, we really don't have no, other than aerial part of it, we have no water, no hose, no nothing to, to go in and take care of the fire that we're at.
And that's, that's, that's the same situation that occurred back when you guys, you guys made the recommendation to us to buy the new truck, correct?
Correct.
I mean, I think.
The new pumper?
No, the new, the ladder that we apparently are talking about, the new were.
And a good example of that, Tim, if I could, is when Engine 2, the one that we took out of service here a little while ago, when we, when it couldn't get inspected anymore, two years ago maybe, we, we were running the ladder, our 1991 version, as a backup engine because we had lost an Engine 2, you know, age deterioration. So to spec, it's important to spec a truck for what you use it for and how the community's built and how we would use it to fit the needs of the community and the department. And this present ladder truck isn't built that way. If that makes any sense at all to you.
Sure. I'd ask you to flesh out that statement a little bit more for me.
Exactly what we're talking about is that.
Specifically because of the pump aspect of it?
The pump and the, and the water tank. We, we use that ladder truck, the 1991 version, we use it as a backup engine and we can't do that with this 1994 version.
And how does mutual aid deal into this situation? I mean, don't we ultimately have backup if this truck goes down?
We have backup. You're talking the ladder truck, the ladder truck goes down?
Sure, yeah.
We have backup. I think Putney did us a huge favor.
I remember.
I would feel very bad, very, to put them on the spot again and ask them to use that ladder truck again. It's not, it's not their job to keep loaning us their ladder truck. As far as calling in mutual aid, it's important to get a ladder truck to the front of a building. And that's why we run it the way we do on certain types of calls, so we can get it to the front of the building, so we can reach everything, have our angles that we need. Asking for a mutual aid ladder truck, we're not going to get it to the front of the building because our trucks are already going to be laying hose and we can't run over hose, it's been charged, things like that. Also, you can't guarantee that a mutual aid town is going to get us a ladder here because they're all volunteer departments. We could be waiting 20 minutes to get a ladder truck into this town and it's just way too long, way too long.
That's, that's a situation if it went down suddenly during a call, correct? But we also have, as we've heard in previous meetings, we do have the option of a rental at, I thought it was.
Five thousand.
Five thousand a day.
Yeah.
Five to $10,000 a month. Yeah. So I just wanted to get a good handle on, you know, the public safety aspect of this, that we are currently safe and we are safe going into the future that can't be predicted. But that's sort of true with every future I've ever encountered. Because I'm, where I'm going with this is that I really feel like we can't buy top of the line every single time, you know, a department needs the best. And I mean, I feel that we have to be a little bit frugal and I feel that buying this newer, better truck a few months ago was presented to us as a good option for the meantime, between the time that we buy this newer ladder truck. You'd agree with that, right? So, I mean.
Understanding that the ladder truck was in the capital budget for.
Correct.
For a year, hopeful year.
Was that originally in FY 2020? Is that what you were saying?
No.
It was actually in last year.
Right, okay, it was pushed off by last year.
It was pushed off last year for us to go for the, we put it in, but we put it in where we were going to fund it almost entirely with a grant. So there was $50,000 in the budget for the million dollar truck and we applied for the $900,000 grant.
Why don't we just do that again? Let's just do that again.
Well, and we will. No, 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 actually, we are already putting together the application, we'll be bringing it to you shortly to submit, what we intend to do is go 50/50 this time. Whether you approve this for the budget or whether you don't, we did well in that competition for that grant last year. We stayed in for a long time, but we didn't get it. So we're hoping that we can make our application more favorable by proposing that it be $475,000 of grant money and $475,000 of town money instead of $950,000 of grant.
So we're still in the loop for that grant?
So we will apply for that grant whether.
We're applying.
The vehicle is budgeted for or not this year. If we, you know, continue to save towards it. If we, you know, continue to save towards it for a future year purchase, we'll still apply for the grant. And if you approve it and town meeting approves it in this year's budget, we'll still apply for the grant because it may come through and save us close to half a million dollars.
Can I ask, are you, all set, can I ask a couple of questions or did you want to ask a few more?
I actually just wanted to throw it out to you because I know the next thing you might say is that, don't forget everyone here on the board that there's a year lag in the receiving the truck. So, that's sort of from your argument, I wanted to throw that to you because I knew that that's what you wanted to remind us of.
And that's what I wanted to check on too. So, I just want to walk myself and anybody else through the process. So, we are sitting here and if we approve it today and it goes into the budget, we still have an entire year for the build, right?
An entire year for the build from March.
Starting in March.
If you approve it tonight, we will start-
The paperwork.
Specing it tomorrow. We will start putting it together so if town meeting approves it, those-
Yeah, I was just going to say, you can't do anything until town meeting.
Right, so from March. So, then we're looking at March, so you're going to receive hypothetically, would receive said truck, March.
In 2019.
In March of 2020.
No, March of 2019.
19, okay. But if we were to push it off again, then we're going to do a whole nother year for a budget process, plus a whole nother year for a specking, assuming that this current ladder truck runs just fine the entire time and at no time we have a problem with having two trucks on site because that's what we technically need when we send out this ladder truck. And I understand the mutual aid thing, if our trucks are already there, we can't clearly be like, hey, here's mutual aid's truck, can you guys move aside?
Right, and that, that time lag also could be July to July depending on when the town manager and the finance director could free up-
Right.
Money for us to go up there.
For that, I mean, if we could, if it, if the timelines could be shrunk, I would prefer to wait. But because there's that stipulation where it's going to be that amount of time because that's how long it takes to approve a budget, that's how long it takes to build a fire truck. I am, would rather have it in the budget and send it to town meeting to discuss myself.
Does it make sense to hang on to the 91 for a pumper or no?
It's gone.
It's gone.
We traded it for the 94 situation.
Oh, that's right, it's gone. What did we get for that?
$10.
$4,000 for scrap.
And the tires were worth $3,000.
Yeah. I don't want to-
No, don't even go in there.
It sounds to me like, I mean, we can, you know, talk about this for a long time, but it sounds like we want to go ahead with that option. And I, you know, I'll say this although I don't need to say it because I know that it'll happen, that you will put together a really nice coherent description, including what you just said about the timing and all that, for town meeting so that, you know, that information will be available to people a month before the meeting and we'll have a very informed conversation about all this again in March.
Just one thought, while these guys are here and Steve Barrett's here, because they kind of go hand in hand, I'd like to hear his thoughts on the sidewalk plow in conjunction with, or not unless you have another-
Well, I had just one more follow-up.
Oh, follow.
You said something about a cascading effect of, of equipment purchases towards the future. I'm just looking at our chart here of capital equipment plan provided to me. I'm just wondering what you mean by that because FY 2020 doesn't seem to have-
2021 has an engine in it.
Correct, but if we, if we push this purchase to a FY 2020 purchase, how does that create a cascade for the 2021 equipment plan?
When we go-
I can answer that actually. So, that's what I was speaking to about how the different departments' needs all end up. You know, we try to keep a relatively steady amount of capital investment. And so, different departments have larger needs at different times. So, in next year's, 2020, in the plan is a $380,000 grader. And that, that's likely to be the piece of equipment that would be, you know, hard to afford in the same year as, as the ladder truck. So, then if the grader gets pushed off, the grader's competing with the, with the engine the next year. And that tends to have a compounding impact. So, we deal with each year on its own merits. You know, we tried to fund this truck, or this ladder apparatus a year ago in a way that wouldn't crowd out other needs and we were unsuccessful with that. And so, now we're looking at, you know, either this year or over a multi-year period, finding the wherewithal to afford this vehicle with our own means. That this year led to a very small ask, you know, particularly on the project side more than the equipment. This is a relatively normal year in terms of equipment, but we're not asking to do much project work at all this year because we just can't afford it in a year when we're looking at a million dollar piece of equipment.
Go ahead, it's because we're, you know, the mood of the board is to kind of talk about feelings. My feeling is I really wanted to go forward with the layaway plan idea, the earmarked plan. Because I wasn't convinced that this was a public safety issue immediately. And I felt like we could, you know, put some money aside and that might help us bring in some grant money. If you're, if you're assuring us that it's not going to affect the application for grant money if the town provides-
If the town commits to a 475 match, whether or not we have that sitting aside as cash, I don't think is going to have an impact on whether or not we receive the grant.
So, that's, I mean, that's where I'm landing. I'm, I'm a little more comfortable than I was, but if we were to take a vote, I'd probably vote for earmarking $300,000 for this very purchase and pushing, pushing the purchase to the next fiscal year.
I mean, I was, I was on that same line for a long time about it. But, you know, then I started thinking about, it is such a, you know, an expensive piece of equipment that let the body at large really discuss it and, you know. I, like David said, I think, David Scholes said, you know, I think our biggest problem right now is the 3.92. How do we lower that? You know, I don't, I don't see us, certainly isn't, we're not biting off anything yet, anything big enough to get it down to a 2.5 or a, I mean, because that's where I've always said I'd like to be, you know, anything under 2.5 is, is kind of acceptable. And one year we had a, like David said, we had a, we did nothing. But we did dip into our, you know, our unassigned reserve fund. But, you know, I, I always feel that the unassigned reserve fund is taxpayers' money. That's how it was put in there. It was put in because, well, we did our due diligence, but, you know, we kind of overtaxed a little bit. That's why we got that extra money. So, am I, I'm kind of correct on that to some degree.
Finish your thought and I'll-
No, go ahead.
So, it absolutely taxpayers' money. Let's not have any misunderstanding about that. There's a stewardship responsibility that the board has and staff has with you to use that taxpayers' money wisely. And so, the town now for the better part of a decade has had a 10% guideline-
Yes, which is good.
To be, you know, ready for things like Irene and other kinds of, you know, there can be financial emergencies that are not natural disasters. And so, it's good to have some money aside. We've talked before about the fact that, you know, 10% is actually a pretty small quantity in terms of its relative proportion of a year's worth of expenses. So, it doesn't go all that far even though it's a significant amount of money. The reason why, you've heard me over and over again and I will keep suggesting to you that that excess fund balance, when we have something in excess of 10% in the unassigned fund balance, why that excess amount ought to be used for, for one-time capital investment rather than for recurring expenses is so that we're most wisely managing that taxpayers' money. It is still, when we use it for those purposes, like for instance, putting $450,000 of it into a fire truck. We are still doing something of value for the taxpayers with the taxpayers' money, but we're doing it in a way that doesn't set us up for having to play catch-up to it next year. If that same $450,000 is used just for making this year's taxes easier to bear, then next year we start $450,000 in the hole just trying to have a steady, you know, no change budget.
I think it's fair to say that when we, when we, when this budget's put together, there's hopefully a little bit more than we need in certain lines so that there will be a certain, I mean, you want a budget to the penny.
You can't.
Because then if something goes over, you're in debt, you're going to borrow. You know, the idea is to, is to be, you know, plan on a colder winter, you know, plan on more electricity, plan on a roof leak.
Exactly. If we come in around a couple of percent, you know, 1% to 2% surplus-
Pretty accurate.
Then we've been solid. If we have more than that, and we have these last couple of years, but we have not so much for reasons of poor planning, but because we've had opportunities that we brought to you and you've seized to save operating funds in, by making changes to certain kinds of operations in the middle of the year. When we've made those changes in the middle of the year, it's provided us a dividend that made, instead of a $200,000 or $300,000 surplus, we've ended up with a $700,000 surplus. So, there's been a little extra put towards capital these last couple of years.
And we've had an unusually long period of low energy costs. Relatively low.
True, that's very true.
I can also remember when I first got on the board in 2008, that we were the first board to start saying, we're, I think that's when we got rid of one of the sidewalk plows. That's when we, we really said, we've got to tighten the budget because we're being overtaxed in this area. And I think it came back to bite us in the hiney a little bit because we weren't planning for the future. We weren't keeping out a rotation of vehicles, we weren't. And, you know, it took a while for me to, you know, to realize that, but it, it did come back to haunt us. So, I don't want to get into that position again.
Man, and a comment before you go on. I think we do need to hear from Steve. And to set the table for that, I just want to say, I appreciate the comments each of you are making. I think that you're in a really solid place to wrestle with these last big decisions about these pieces of equipment and then how that's going to relate to responsible use of fund balance and a responsible level of taxation. And the reason why you need to hear from Steve is because you've been showing a pretty strong level of interest in the sidewalk plow as well as the weeks have gone by and we've looked at these different issues. And my advice to you, and I offer it reluctantly and uncomfortably because I never want to be in a position where we're competing here. We want to be a team and we want to bring your recommendations and we have done that in what we put forward to you as staff. But as you get down now to making your final decisions, I think you need to weigh the sidewalk plow and weigh the truck and weigh the various things that you've talked about tonight and we've been talking about now for these last couple of months. Because I'd have to recommend to you against, which doesn't mean you can't approve it and it doesn't mean town meeting can't approve it, but I would strongly recommend that you don't buy both the truck in the way that we've recommended it and the sidewalk plow with fund balance because that'll take us down below 9%. And while I agree with what you said, Dave, a little while ago, that for the right reason and the right moment, it's okay to go a little below 10. In fact, I brought you a recommendation in this budget to go down to 9.4 because of the adjustments that have been made over the course of considering this budget, we would be going down to 9.6 if you approve it in its current form. That would be a tactical decision to make in order to put enough cash towards the truck to limit the amount of borrowing. But if we add to that $140,000 more in order to go buy the second sidewalk plow with fund balance instead of with taxes, I think we would be not being good stewards and not trying hard enough to adhere to that 10% guideline.
Well, on that note, should we pull up a chair, Steve?
Oh, you guys stay right there.
Might as well.
We're not done with you yet.
Well, that was a good intro.
Thank you.
I find myself in kind of a unique situation here. I was the captain of ladder truck for over 20 years. And so, I can tell you the importance of that ladder truck. And one of the questions here was how good is the existing ladder? Well, when you use it, it better be good. So, you know, when you need it, you need it, you need it really bad. And when you don't, you know, maybe it will make it, maybe it won't, but it's not like a dumb truck to take out of service. It's, it's really doing something important. And the other part I find that I wrestle with is I didn't put this tractor in the budget. So, it's a little unique for me to have interest in increasing the services that public work supplies or provides. So, I can answer your questions to it. I don't disagree with what Peter just said. I mean, as I sit here with the fire department, it would definitely take precedent over that. So, it's a matter of service and, and, you know, again, you'll probably hear at town meeting, there'll be support for it. It would help us for people that walk and there's a lot of people that walk. I think we provide a pretty good service right now. You've seen it this winter, could be better, but I think we provide-
That's what's going to be my question. How can we, how can we do better with one-
This would make it a lot better and all the sidewalks that, that we currently plow would be done probably within a 24-hour period. So, I mean, this last storm that happened during the week, the, the operator wasn't done until Sunday.
I know.
So, you know, it's a struggle, but that's my position on it. I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
I think my question, it kind of follows up on yours of like, what, how could we do better? Meaning, is it just that that's how long the tractor is out on a consistent basis? Or is it that at some point the guy needs to go home and sleep and an extra staff member would be helpful to kind of pick up slack? I mean, give us a picture of the hours that the tractor is running after a storm.
Last storm, the operator ran for like 16 to 18 hours. He went home and rested and then he got right back in that for another eight to 10 hours. Then he went and rested. So, your manpower, we're limited on manpower that we have. So, people do have to go home and rest and we only have so many people. And we rely on the utilities division a little bit, we lean on them. But they're, it's very important for them to keep the water supply and the hydrants free and they have other duties that they're responsible for. So, all in all, I think we're doing it just as good as we can. If we have one person that calls out sick, you know, it stresses everything. And you're going to have that. You're going to have somebody that's out sick or, or, you know, that's going to make a difference. Or a piece of, another piece of equipment that breaks down. So, with the equipment that we have, I think we do a pretty good job with what we have. But it does require a maximum amount of time and effort.
So, I just ran a quick number, just a lot of thoughts rolling through my head about knowing the interest you have in the plow and the intent that I think is emerging to proceed with the truck. There is another alternative and I hadn't thought of this one until this moment and it's always dangerous to do this sort of thing on the fly. But I think my calculations are right. So, another potential way to do this would be if you do want to proceed with both, but maintain the adherence to the 10% guideline. It means we'd need to borrow more for the truck. Now, effectively what that means, and we need to not sugarcoat this, effectively what that means is we're borrowing to buy the tractor. So, think of it in those terms that, you know, if we increase the amount of money, we would borrow once because, you know, you're not going to go get two loans. But, but we'd be increasing the amount of money we'd be borrowing relative to the amount of cash we'd be putting into the truck in order to free up the cash to buy the sidewalk plow with and still keep the tax rate at the 3.92 or below. So, if you did that, just a quick thumbnail on the equivalent, adding, adding $140,000 to the borrowing for the truck would take the annual cost of that, that debt over the 10-year period from about $60,000 a year to about $75,000 a year. So, effectively what you'd be doing is committing $15,000 a year over the next decade to putting a second sidewalk plow in service. And so, there's a third option for you in this policy decision.
Steve, here's a- Steve, here's a crazy...can you rent a sidewalk plow?
To borrow Andy's. Andy's got a new one at Academy.
We've actually used...it's a little bit different machine.
Yeah.
It's a big...there's a huge difference.
Right.
Just the horsepower alone, and, you know, when you visualize what that machine's doing, if you have a six- or eight-inch storm, that all goes onto the sidewalk, and if it's Western Avenue that's 30-something feet wide, now it's equivalent to a three-foot storm. And then if you add a little, you know, rain and ice, there's a lot of stress.
And it dents. Even without the rain and ice, it dents, because it's what's coming out of the plow.
We haven't had success in even finding one. Our neighbors, again, somewhat to the ladder truck, we rely on our neighbors. We've borrowed from other towns when our sidewalk tractor went down.
And again, I'm not micromanaging here, but is there any way that the plow guys can do any of the, you know, to help out?
They actually...
I know they do. I know they do down by Guilford Street.
Yeah, they do Maple Street, out by the Austen School. When we pick up snow, that helps relieve some of the stress on that sidewalk tractor.
Right.
But again, you have utility poles and curbs, and, you know, the sidewalk tractor has to maneuver between all those.
So, if we did your method, we're going to be paying more over the long term.
What it means is, when we update the long-term financial plan for you, there's $15,000 a year more in operating for each of the next 10 years in order to pay the debt service for the truck. So, it would be a $75,000 annual cost instead of a $60,000 annual cost. But it would enable us to stay at or near the 10% guideline and also acquire the sidewalk tractor.
And just as the fire truck or anything else we discuss, if we were to put that in the budget, it goes to town meeting.
Right.
They can say, "You guys are out of your mind," at any time.
The problem I'm having with the sidewalk plow is that there's been enough...there's been enough citizen reaction to it that...don't take this the wrong way. I haven't had a lot of reaction about the ladder truck, but I have had a lot of people about the sidewalk plow.
It's been a pretty overwhelming response.
And it's been a...you know, it's been very overwhelming. I've gotten a lot of letters, a lot of...
You're talking a million dollars against 100...well, 950 versus 140, which is a lot easier for people to swallow. We get that plus clear sidewalks in the winter affect a lot more people than a ladder truck does until they need it.
Oh, again, I, you know...
You know, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we weren't sitting here telling you that we need this. We need it, and...
I know. Every year, we rattle with this.
We get it, yeah.
You know, it's...again, and I hate to keep going back to the 10% we have in our unassigned...
Franz wants to say something. I just had a quick follow-up for Peter.
Okay. And then David wants to go too.
Do you mind?
Not at all.
You pointed out that you wouldn't recommend going down to 8.8 on the unassigned fund balance. Can you remind us what your already-dipping recommendation was?
Yes. So, we started at 9.4, which I offered to you with a grimace, but again, for the reason that we've talked about, for this one time, for this one piece of equipment at this moment, given the fullness of our financial circumstances, I thought going to 9.4 was acceptable. I didn't think it was desirable, and so I brought it forward to you that way. Because of the...we now believe we can obtain the vehicle for 950 instead of a million, so we've taken $50,000 that would have been use of fund balance. We've taken out of that. You, in your decision a week ago regarding the sidewalk...not the sidewalk, the skate park, put $20,000 of use of fund balance back in, so we're at 770...I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right. 770 right now. I had proposed 800. Over the course of our discussions, we had brought it down to 750. Now, it's back at 770. At 770 use of fund balance, we would land at 9.6%.
Okay.
Okay. But then, if you take the 770 and you add another 140 to it, is when we get down to 8.8.
Right. And I got to push you on that a little bit, because the 9.4, you were willing to accept coming down to 10%.
Reluctantly.
But the 8.8, which is only 0.6 less, somehow has crossed an invisible line for you.
It has. So, I think it...
So, I want to push back on that.
That's fine.
Why suddenly...what's magical about that 9%?
So, first and foremost, this is...we're into art, not science. We're into gut reads, not rational decisions. And so, it's going to ultimately be, you know, where your collective gut lands in the making of this policy decision. My advice to you is, you know, I felt uncomfortable going down to the 9.4, but I was willing to do it for the reasons I expressed. 8.8 is twice as far below our standard.
Okay.
Instead of being six tenths below, it's 12 tenths below, and I...
It's another six tenths below.
It's another six tenths below, and I, you know, at that point, it's like, well, how low do you go? You know, I mean, it's...the 10% exists for a reason. I think being at 9.6 right now is actually a pretty solid place to be. I like that through the course of the discussions, we've landed on a place that's a more responsible place than what I first brought to you back in October. And to go down below nine, I just think is not good stewardship of that important resource to town.
That's clearer to me. Thank you.
Okay. Can I take David and then Franz?
Yeah. The purpose of the fund balance is for things that you don't anticipate. It's not for fire trucks. It's not for CEDs or the skate park. It's for when something comes up that we need to spend money on. It's like an emergency fund. And to me, the sidewalk plow is a poster child of what you would use fund balance for. And if we had our 10% fund balance, and it's October, and everything's going along just fine, and a roof case in, we would take 0.6% or whatever it took out of that fund balance and fix the roof. And so, to me, the sidewalk plow should be in the fund balance. And I'm not going to say that the fire truck shouldn't be, because it's still, we have to spend, you know, we need the money. It doesn't matter how we juggle it. But, you know, I understand completely why you want to keep a 10% in a way. There are some liabilities, potential liabilities to that. But I think the sidewalk plow is a fund balance option, choice, and I don't think we really...you know, I agree with what you've heard from a lot of people, this is something that we really need, and we used to have, how many, five?
Three.
Three. Yeah, three or four. And, you know, I've heard complaints for a long time about not getting a sidewalk plow. So, I mean, you know, I don't want to go...I mean, if we're going to spend it, rather than spend it to reduce taxes, spend it to buy the sidewalk plow, and then try and refill it, and try and, you know, keep things tight enough to get back to 10% at the end of next year.
Franz, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yes. I guess my...Franz Reitzman, the finance committee, my question with regard to Peter's idea about increasing the borrowing is, what's the expected life of the sidewalk tractor plow? If we're going to spread it out over 10 years, how long is it actually going to last?
They...the machines themselves are good for 10 years to 15, no more than that.
Okay. I'm not sure if that, you know, corresponds to a borrowed-for type item, but that would be one of my questions. I also just, I don't know, you know, having gone to all the high school board meetings and the town school board meetings, and there may be a storm brewing here. I don't know how the taxpayers are going to relate to multiple requests for large increases from all the different branches of government that are going to be asking for those things. I mean, I'm just...I'm not that experienced with town meeting or select board or anything like that, but it has a different feel to me this year from the past couple of years.
That's what I've heard, yeah.
I think we've had different things that we need to address that maybe, like, plow we've gone without for a while, the ladder truck's been in the budget for at least a year, so it's landing here. It's landing this time.
Well, again, and no, and I...and he's not even here for me to say, I very rarely don't agree with David, but...and I know this is going to be a prickly thing for you, but I think that's why we have the fund balance. It's for those...I appreciate you doing the math on, you know, trying to, you know, borrow more or borrow less for, however it was worded, you know, through the...for the ladder truck and offset it, you know, and put that into a longer-term commitment for the town. But we have the money, you know? We have the money in the fund balance. So, go.
I think I disagree with...
You took a deep breath.
Yeah. Well, I think I disagree with both of you, but I'm...
How can that be possible?
I'm reading from our citizens that they want the return of previous services, piece of the sidewalk plow. So, that feels to me like that's something that we should be funding with tax dollars on an ongoing basis.
Welcome to your first-year budget, because that's the biggest dilemma that we deal with, is what people want and what can it afford.
But that's a perfect argument against using fund balance.
I couldn't agree with you more, and I couldn't disagree with you more.
But I think you were arguing for using fund balance.
I am, and then I'm not. Because it is, it's a double-edged sword there, because we don't want to dip below our 10%. And we've wrestled this for years about what people want in town and what we can afford. Sometimes, what they want supersedes what we can afford.
Peter, if you want to chime in?
No, I'm done. Yeah, I mean, that's the dilemma that we always...
So, that's very interesting.
You liked what I said.
Well, I did.
I'm reading this.
Yeah. So, you're reading my body language. Right. You spawned an idea of an entirely different way of going about this, that not only might calibrate it right in terms of the balance of the use of fund balance and the tax impact, but I think even more importantly speaks to what Steve spoke to when he joined the table about what we brought you and recommended in this budget, because we thought it was the highest priority needs of the community, versus what we're now talking about, because there were people in the community who said, "Gee, we really think you ought to also do X." And frankly, we agree. We think that would be great to have a second sidewalk plow, for all the reasons we've been talking about it. And we've had good discussions, fuller discussions of this at traffic safety, about not only the plowing in the winter, but other aspects of pedestrian safety in the community, because it's such a walkable place, and we want to keep pedestrians safe. So, that's a good priority too. But, you know, in what we brought you officially from town staff for your consideration, we were valuing the replacement of the ladder truck as a higher priority need of the town. You have an opportunity, another option, a fourth option here, to place before town meeting, as the elected representatives of the people who have come to you and said, "We think you really ought to buy a second sidewalk plow," you could place that item as something outside the budget in front of the town meeting to say, "We're recommending...we the select board are recommending this budget. We have been requested by numerous people in the community to increase the level of service in sidewalk plowing, and we bring it to you as a separate item that if you choose to fund it, will have X impact on the tax rate." So, instead of being, "We bring it to you as a separate item as a use of fund balance," to follow your line of thinking, that it was requested by the public and the taxpayers, and so then there's a kind of a litmus test there for the taxpayers' representatives themselves in town meeting to make the decision, you know, is this a high enough priority need in this year compared to the recommended budget and the circumstances that the state is imposing upon the school tax situation, that we, the representatives at town meeting, choose to also, and it would be a little over a penny? It would be...I can tell you exactly what it would be. It would be 1.22 pennies.
And would we be giving them these two options that you laid out, the borrowing versus the fund balance, or if we put it out, do we, you know...
I would...
That would be my follow-up question to that idea, which I am warned to.
You can't warn an item as a, "Shall we do this, or shall we do that?" You have to...
And we have to present the budget.
The warning has to say, "Shall the body approve doing X?" In addition to that, for reasons I don't need to say again, because we've talked about it plenty even just tonight, I wouldn't recommend that you look at funding this through fund balance. I would...so, if you want to go forward with the fire truck in the manner that we have proposed it to you, I wouldn't suggest using fund balance also to buy the sidewalk plow. So, there...that brings us to Tim's idea, is maybe the place you can land that doesn't kill this idea, but simply moves it along to be considered at town meeting, rather than having you incorporate it into your budget. It's another option.
Tim, how much of the...how much of the fund balance were you proposing for the fire truck?
Or I am proposing $450,000.
So, we have as an option to reduce the amount coming from that pot and move some of that towards funding out, borrowing.
That's correct.
Right.
And we can, as I did earlier with one example, we could estimate for you what the annualized impact of that would be over the 10-year period.
I think Mike would like to chime in there.
Well, just from my amateur standpoint on the financing, we're committing $450,000 to that grant.
Oh.
So, if you reduce that amount that you're trying to reserve for the grant, then we won't have it for the grant if we're awarded it. Am I right?
That has to be a cash commitment?
Hmm.
Or do we not know?
I may be wrong. I don't know, but...
Not if we take it as a no.
Okay.
Just trying to look at all the options.
There's one vote for sure against borrowing any more than we're going to borrow. $60,000 for each of the next 10 years is just...it's just a hole. It's not an investment. It's the opposite. It's giving away, and the $15,000 is going to, when it's all done each, out of those 10 years, it's way more than, because of the debt service, it's way more than if we pay cash for it, so I just...I can't.
So, this is the dilemma that we got into around 2007, 2008, is that we put the town's feeling about being overtaxed, we put that above everything else, and we put it...I can remember when we didn't do two of the dump trucks, or two of the big dump trucks, and, yeah, those guys were livid, but...and it passed, I mean, it went through Representative Town Meeting, that we wanted to have a lower, you know, a lower tax increase to the people. But I can attest, and it's hard to swallow, but after this many years, that doesn't work, that people want services, and, you know, they're the ones that are basically footing the bill, and if they...and you sit back and you go, "You're screaming about your tax rate, and you're screaming about your services." I mean, I can remember taking away the sidewalk plow. They went ballistic, but they also said, "Well, got a lower tax rate, so I guess..." But what they're also saying is, "Well, I don't see it in my tax bill. I didn't see my tax bill go down." Well, no, because the school was probably higher that year or something, and so you never see a reduction in your tax.
Right.
You know, hopefully, we try to level fund it or keep it close, but even if we did a negative, the people are still not going to see a lowering of their tax bill, because something's going to bite into that. So, I just, you know, I know you...we try to please everybody at this point, and this is the toughest time of year. Try to what the people want and what we can afford. I mean, it's just that constant struggle.
Peter, yeah?
So, building on that comment, I think one other thing that we need to reflect upon as you make these final decisions is, I'm not sure which one of you, between Dave and John, made this comment, but you've been on the board the longest, and you were talking about, well, gee, in the years on the board, that it feels like the first time of having an increase of this magnitude.
Yeah. We both said it.
Yeah, and I think that's a fair observation. I think one thing that we need to acknowledge about this work, both, you know, beginning with the piece we brought to you that reflected things we've been talking about all year long, and saying, "We're going to address those when we get the budget time," and then what you've done with it, and what you've heard from the public, and what you've done in response to their input. This is a budget. It's the first one I've been involved with since I've been here in the last three years. the last three years, that is saying, we're going to do more. Town government is going to do more in its service to the community. So, in the prior years, it was about, you know, how to maintain the lowest possible cost of doing the same thing for another year. And we made a conscious decision this year, we were approaching it differently, for better or for worse, our timing may be off, as Franz points out.
Well, that's what scares me a little.
You know, the state has sent some punishing news down to the schools, and we're going to have to see how this all gets sorted out at town meeting. But in terms of this town government budget that we're responsible for, we made a conscious decision to look to build up some things this year. And so we're doing that, and it costs money. And that, so I think the 3.92, you know, you're going to make a final decision on that in a couple of weeks, as to whether that's a palatable number, or there's, you know, some more nipping and tucking we're going to need to do with this thing. But, but it's not an outrageous number when you consider the ways in which we'll be providing a higher level of service to the community.
I mean, I also think this is what our, this is why we have reps, too, is they, they have the responsibility to hold the school budget and our budget in their hands, and to discuss this, and to weigh them side by side, and to see the total implication. That if we can't sit here and base our decisions off what we think the schools are going to have to do, because we could sit here all night and speculate on that. We need them to have it both in their hands, and sit with us for an entire 12-hour Saturday and fight this out with us.
Yeah, but I think the point that Franz was trying to make is that even the school district this year is, is going to take a big bite.
It's going to be a very long meeting.
And so, you know, I hope a lot of people go to their meeting. You know, it's, I don't know.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we've gone a long way on this.
I have a question. Peter, when you talked about, like, if the tractor would be put in for town meeting to decide, would that be as a special article?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so it would sit as its own separate article, and it would be, in the article, we'd have to work with Bob to get the wording right, I've not seen one exactly like this, but I believe it can be fashioned properly, to say, you know, shall the town be authorized to buy a sidewalk plow, and have the cost of that $140,000 added to the tax levy that is approved in article whatever that's related to the budget. And what would happen is the sidewalk plow would be on before the overall budget discussion, so that if the sidewalk article got approved, the budget article would be amended to have that additional amount in it.
Well, that's what I was kind of asking about the ladder truck, if that could have been a separate article. But, you know, or does it, that's what I said in the beginning-
The ladder truck can be isolated, anything-
I know.
-that we brought to you can be isolated as its own separate item, instead of being part of the whole. The reason why, in the course of this discussion, we were talking about doing that with the sidewalk plow, is because that's the thing that was brought to you by the public.
Right.
That goes back, actually, to Tim's comment from 15 or 20 minutes ago, about that we were asked to raise up that level of service.
I'm actually inclined to vote to do it as an article, because it is outside of the budget, because the fire truck was already part of the 3.92 that you presented.
Oh, for the sidewalk plow?
Yeah.
I am, or Bob doing it as a separate article?
I'm inclined to have that as, and that. Tim?
I'm okay with that. I'm just really surprised how this evening has gone.
Eh, it's all because of me.
I really thought that I had support for earmarking $300,000 for that truck in the next fiscal year.
We should have gone out for a beer.
Yeah, that's usually the case.
If we did that, then we wouldn't be struggling with the other questions right now.
But it-
However, I know you guys wouldn't be happy, but, um-
But it's still a kind of a-
That's the way I thought this evening was going to go, but it didn't.
It's really very typical.
No, 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 he's right.
In any kind of a negative way, I mean, and actually, I think it's really a great advantage, because we don't just lock ourselves into positions-
It's true.
-and then, and not listen.
Right.
Really, it's, it's the best part of this job, really, is being open and listening and trying to come up with the right decision, which is almost always impossible, but-
You get whiplash sitting next to you.
It's really, it's a couple of weeks-
He's going to never know where he's going to go.
Well, for most of the far, I'm pretty-
You used to be able to change your mind.
I would not change my mind, and, you know, but-
We've really moved, and we've changed-
I'm just, I'm running out of Prozac.
Do we want to start putting our cells on the table, and does somebody want to put out a motion for anything at this point? Just lock this down?
Bet John does.
No, you go ahead.
No, no, I, I'm, no, not me first.
Just one thought, and that's procedurally, anything that we decide has to have three votes, even though there's only-
That's right.
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah, and, so I'm not sure, I'm going to think about Kate here.
Kate wants us to vote.
No, Kate gave us-
She gave pretty clear margin.
She yelled in my ear.
Vote! She wants us to move forward.
Yes, she doesn't want this to delay.
If there's something before you tonight where you're split 2-2, then obviously it'll come up another night, she would otherwise like you to proceed, rather than wait on her.
So, Peter, how would you like a motion to be?
We're used to having them written out for us.
I know, we are.
That's true. And I'm happy to help you form one. I want to acknowledge, though, that the awkwardness for me is, you've got a lot of different options in play-
Yeah, I know.
-and I haven't heard a consensus form around that. So, at the risk of drawing this out a little further, I think I'd like to list for you what I think your four choices are-
Okay.
-and then you can hone in on one of those and make a motion. Does that make sense?
Sounds great.
Okay. So, in no particular order, I'm just going to try to remember the different places we've been in this conversation. So, one thing would be to have a separate warning article regarding tax funding of the sidewalk plow. And you would include the ladder truck, you would approve keeping the ladder truck in the budget in the manner that we've brought it to you. That's one package. Another package, separate from that, is approve buying both items, but you'd actually incorporate the sidewalk plow into the budget that you recommend to town meeting, and you would recommend that that $140,000 for that item be a use of fund balance, and that the borrowing for the fire truck be increased from 500 to 640, so as to keep the net impact to the taxpayers the same. I shouldn't say it quite that way. Keeps the net impact to the taxpayers the same, except for that incremental increase in the debt service.
In the debt service.
Right. So in year one, it's a couple of thousand dollars, over the 10-year period, it's $15,000 each. That's another option. A third option is to approve the truck, as we have proposed it, and say, we wish we could, but not this year, on the sidewalk plow. And a fourth option, which I don't think you're inclined to go for, but just because it's been part of the discussion, so I throw it out only to say, you know, the other place that we talked about possibly landing would be funding additional fund balance, but not enough of it, towards the ladder truck, with the intent to purchase it next year, and buying the sidewalk plow this year with fund balance. So there'd be like, what I think Tim described, a $300,000 commitment towards the truck, bringing the total in that sinking fund to 350, towards the 950, which would probably be closer to $1 million next year. So, you know, but it would be making progress towards that, and then you'd buy the sidewalk plow in the budget that you recommend, using fund balance. But I don't really see support for that particular option, from, based on the discussion that you've had.
Well, there's also number five that David brought up, is using all of, didn't you say you use all of fund balance for the sidewalk plow?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, it's a fund balance.
Yeah, takes it down to 8.1.
Going all the way down to 8.8. So that is another option.
What, you notice he skipped?
So-
Yeah, I don't know if you noticed that, but I did. He went right by that one.
I'll reiterate my recommendation that you not choose that one, and frankly, I think in the sorting out of this, between the other four, that is purely what being a select board member is about. It's a hard choice, and it's a policy decision that doesn't have a right or wrong answer to it.
Now, here's one question for, maybe it can be answered now, but I don't think so, for one reason to not vote tonight, and that's the, next week we'll get another, I don't think the police-fire committee is going to meet between now and next meeting.
No.
So, well, next week we'll get a report, so that would be on our agenda, and we could talk about the 150 or so that's there for the carport. And my question around that is, and maybe we know the answers, was that in, when it was going to be here, was there a carport or some other structure that was going to meet whatever purposes the carport is going to meet in the original plan? And if no, was it in the original plan that we made for Putney Road, a structure to serve that purpose? Or did it come along at a later point? And the reason that that's important to me is that our purpose in doing this, when it was going to be here and when it was going to be up there, is to get a 30-to-50-year project completed, get it all done. And if that is a part that was always included in getting it all done for 50 years, then I would say, yeah, spend the money on the carport. If it wasn't, I would say, let's ask if we can use that money to buy the sidewalk plow.
Oh, I was going to say, because that, the carport is already in the budget, well, it's in the overall budget that was approved for-
In the very beginning.
For the police-fire station.
So why are we making the decision about whether to spend it or not?
Well, because it leaves us with extra money in that.
Because in the 62 Black Mountain Road version, it was not included.
Right.
So, but remember, that was revised from multiple prior iterations, and I honestly don't know exactly what was and wasn't included here at this building, so I can't speak to that.
I don't think, well, no, actually, Steve might know whether there was something in the original.
I need to correct one thing, though, and I apologize to you, Dave, for this, because you did ask me when we were going to be having a final report on the finances for the project, and I did tell you it was going to be next week. I learned earlier today that we won't have all the data we need in order to provide that final report in the next couple of days, which is what I would have to have in order to be able to put it on for next Tuesday. So it looks like February 6th is going to be the final report.
Which is too late to decide.
Which is going to be too late for this cycle.
Yeah.
It's not too late to address, in its fullness, the question of, you know, what use to put to the dividend that we expect to return from the project. But we've got to be very precise about what that dividend is, and I can't do that for you for Tuesday's meeting, I'm sorry.
So, I guess I'm willing to abandon the 8.8% and go with, well, Fran, you're running immediately.
Thanks. Thanks, David. John, did you want to say something before I do?
No, I, I mean, the only thing I was going to say is that, you know, in my mind, it might be nice to have both of these as a, as an item. You know, the sidewalk plow and the fire truck, as a-
Pull it out of the budget.
I don't know how.
That's my only, yeah, I mean, that's what that means.
I mean, because, yeah, we'd have to pull that out of the budget, to have it as a separate item.
Yes, and if you do that with multiple items, especially at this scale, it starts, the actual budget that you're recommending starts to not really look like the fullness of what you recommend.
I like the, you know, this is just my opinion, I like the first one you came up with, separate item for the sidewalk plow, and let it go out of the budget.
Yeah, the fire truck's been on our list of things coming down the road forever, so taking it out and saying, gee, do you think we need this, is sort of like, well, why didn't we say what we said?
Somebody ready to make that motion, or do we want to have more?
We don't even have to. Can you recap that?
I think we should.
I move that we, Jan, help me out with this. I move that we have a separate-
Warning article.
Warning article for the purchase of the sidewalk plow.
Right.
And-
As a tax-funded item.
Okay.
And-
That's right. And propose our budget.
Yeah, do you want to take them both at once, or do you want to take two separate? Because then the companion to that is approving the fire truck as recommended in the budget.
So he asked me-
Is it okay, is it clear enough for you if they're matched up together, or would you rather have two separate motions?
No, I think the one motion works.
Well, there are two items on our agenda, so maybe we ought to stick with that format.
Okay. So on the sidewalk plow, what you're recommending is that it be a separate item, it's not included in your budget.
Not included in our budget, it's a separate, warned item.
With it valued on that warned item for being funded by taxes.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to warrant a separate article for town meeting regarding tax funding of the sidewalk plow. Is there further discussion on this item? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And it looks like we are re-leaning towards a second motion for the ladder truck, leaving it in the budget, if somebody wants to make that motion.
The move, we add the ladder truck, or approve the ladder truck purchase as presented in the budget.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve the ladder truck, as has been presented in the budget. Is there further discussion on this item?
I just want, so there were a few proposals for the funding of the ladder truck, are we?
As presented in the budget proposal.
Yes, this would be, yeah, as originally presented with the 450 and the 500 in borrowing.
Yes, so that's what I was going to be specific to. Exactly. 450 use of fund balance, $500,000 borrow.
Or a grant.
Or a grant.
Yes, we'll actually apply for the grant as a 50-50, but it's going to be roughly approximate to those numbers. That's right.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. Great. I've lost, I long since lost the agenda, because I like to shuffle papers.
All right. Daywork, Josh, can I give you an update?
Could give an update on the daywork job.
Thank you. So unfortunately, we're in a similar situation with this, as with the downtown lighting. Both Groundworks and town staff have continued to gather information and work with that information, compare notes with each other about how this might work. We still are hopeful that a program can be created that could be operated by Groundworks and funded in part by the town. We certainly would participate as a receiver of laborers, in a place where we could provide employment to people who participate in the program. So, the idea of the partnership that we've been talking about now for several months is still very much alive, but there are, right at the beginning, right at the outset, we talked about some logistical hurdles that are pretty tall, in terms of doing proper employment documentation and management of this process, and the insurance aspect of it, and we just haven't been able to resolve all of those things sufficiently to be able to recommend a program to you. I think particularly in the context of what we've talked about this evening, about this being a budget where we're already pushing some services to, you know, serve the community to a greater degree than we have in the past, there's some extra cost in this, there's going to be a tough decision for you to make about taxes here. For us to ask for another X dollars, we've talked about it in terms of being maybe up to 30,000, to put any kind of a number in this budget, based on the very conceptual idea we have right now, that's not a program that we can recommend, I think is not the right responsible place to be. Josh and I have had that conversation, he agrees with that, and we intend to keep working at this, so we can come back to you in the months ahead, and maybe have something that could operate on a really slimmed-down scale as a pilot, sometime during the year, so we can kind of see how it works. But in any event, that, you know, it'd be brought forward to you at a time when we can stand behind what we're bringing to you, instead of just discuss ideas.
I think the most daunting thing is, you know, all the people who are working on it have their other work, so getting to all of those details is difficult.
Yeah, there is that, and you know from the good works that Groundworks is doing out there, and I hope you know from the work that we do for you and the community, that, you know, our hearts are in this. It's not something that we only find time for when we can, but it's, it's something that has not gelled sufficiently to bring to you yet.
And I think, I think that gelling is also necessary to make a, you know, sort of democratic discussion happen. Because we don't know what it is yet, we can't really-
That's exactly the point. And so for tonight's purposes, we just ask you to pass by that item and go on to SEVEds.
Okay, everybody, you okay with that?
Yeah.
And as long as the town and Groundworks are still working all the time, I'm good with that. SevEds. Should be a paper page, something.
Page almost last.
Page almost last.
Yes.
And God knows in my pile what page it is, oh, here we go. All right. Teeter, do you want to walk us through this?
Sure, so you asked us to provide to you a summary of what the last few years looks like in terms of contributions from the town to SEVEds, and contributions from the town to private ventures.
ventures. I should say, the contributions to the private ventures have been made in the form of loans, most of which have been paid back and are being paid back in a timely manner. The contributions to SEVEds have been made in the form of grants for our contribution towards the operating funds of SEVEds. So, what you see on this, next to last page in your backup, is actually data all the way back to FY '13. And you can see that in FY '17, we had a very active year making loans. We committed ourselves to doing more of that, to making the program more visible and making more money available to small businesses in the community. We did that, and that's reflected here with 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 different loans, four of which are at the maximum amount of $70,000. But in the prior years, with the exception of the GS Precision, which is a large magnitude loan to help that large project occur a couple of years ago, fewer loans and relatively smaller amounts. The SEVEds funding, then the total amount of loans made since 2013 is $854,000. The SEVEds contributions are $25,000 in 2013, in fiscal '14, in two separate payments, a summertime of 2013 payment of $25,000, and then a wintertime 2014 payment of $36,147. There was substantial funding provided by the town to SEVEds. The following year in FY '15, there was none, likely because of something having to do with the timing of the two large payments from the previous year. And then in 2016, a $12,500 contribution. 2017 and 2018 were both separate items on the town meeting warning. $25,000 was recommended and approved in 2017, and $24,000 was recommended and approved for 2018.
Great, thank you for that. Discussion?
There are a couple of, I'm not sure exactly how many, but the 2014 loan to Wasabi for the Brooks House and the $200,000 to GS Precision, and the one we're looking at Commonwealth Dairy committing to their next $250,000, their expansion. And those are pretty big contributions that the town, and they get paid back. Well, I'm not sure the Commonwealth, we haven't figured it all out, but they do get paid back. But that's really a lot of what SEVEds does, is raise money from all kinds of different sources to do these big projects and really attract employers and grow the economy. And, but, you know, the town is contributing pretty extensively there. And I think we're looking at going back to a small number of loans, given the small amount of money that we've got and the $3,000 or $4,000 that we get in every month from loan payments. So, typically, I would say, yeah, let's, you know, they're doing, they're really doing good work with this money. They're really focusing on the real issues and they're showing no progress. At the same time, they have a lot of other sources in revenue in the town, and because of where we are with the grant, with our small business loan balance and what might happen if we make this commitment to Commonwealth, I think we need to kind of stay, make, I would like to suggest that we, and I'm not going to make the most of what we can talk about, but that we do it, instead of $3, we do it $1, then, again, which is 12, I figured that someplace, but we haven't...
About $12,500 or somewhere.
Yeah, $12,900 or something like that. But instead of, you know, the $3 or the $24,000 that we've been doing, just so that we can keep some more of that money in that. If we get a business that comes along and really needs a leg up, and we can't help over it, it would really be unfortunate. And in the past, when we've had billions, or not billions, but hundreds of thousands of dollars in there, which we still do, but we've got $250,000 of it, you know, I would hesitate to support it as much as we can or as much as we ask for. But right now, I'm thinking that I'd like to keep that on that committee. Selfishly, I would like to have money in there so that if we get more opportunities, with the seven that we had this year, we can be able to provide as support.
And we may take that hit on the two that are in default, so, I mean, that's another reason why it's...
Tim?
I agree.
I do, too.
Interesting again.
I looked right at you.
Never a dull moment. I thought I was going to be somewhere else, and everyone else would be somewhere else. But I think there's a balance to be kept here, because SEVEds and BDCC are doing a good job on their own, raising money from different sources. And the town should, every year, consider whether our contribution is adequate at that level or should be increased, should be decreased, as you're proposing. Honestly, where I landed was that the, I mean, four out of the last six years, if you sort of take the aberration into account as sort of, you know, a fiscal year issue, four out of the last six, we've been funding SEVEds at 24 or 25K, so what they call now a $2 per resident. So, I'm actually, I was fine with staying at that level, so essentially, you know, level funding that portion of our contribution to them, with the knowledge that they, you know, they're requesting $3 a person. We do have money in the fund. I don't think it's so taken such a hit because of the recent troubles that we've been highlighting. But, so that's where I was landing in that balance. So, I'd like to hear a little bit more, maybe, from John and Randy about your reasoning, if you're in favor of John's, of David's proposal.
Well, John, you want to go?
No, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I was leaning with Tim, so I'm a little surprised, too.
Oh, you were?
I was, yeah.
Oh, I thought I heard you agreeing with...
Well, I think I was going, huh, you know, like, hm, I was surprised, but open to hearing it. But I, my gut was to go with $2 as well, but, John?
It's funny, Peter and I had a discussion today about SEVEds and BDCC, and I'm always, I've never been able, as long as I've been on the board, to wrap my head around SEVEds and to wrap my head around, and I think, we've had a discussion about SEVEds before, and I just, again, I don't think I can make a rational decision, but my decision leads more towards David's. Again, twice in one night, this has got to be a miracle.
You left the room last time, but it happened.
I agree with you, only because I think they do have the sources of raising money, and they, but, again, it's also not a huge amount of money that we're talking about in between. So, I mean, I could, I think I will go with, you know, this one I can stay on the fence on, and I don't usually stay on the fence, so...
Peter?
Oh, you said I was a fence sitter, though, last week, so...
In your initial, taking turns here and each, making a comment about this, you've shown yourselves to be split 2-2. If you want to wrestle with this some, please do, and we'll help you as best we can to get to a decision. But you made a good hard one here a few minutes ago, a couple of good hard ones a few minutes ago. If you're split and you don't care to wrestle your way towards trying to get to a 3 to 1 or a 4 to 0 around this, we could just roll this item to next time and be able to decide it with Kate.
Let me just say this.
Next time after that.
No. I don't want to walk out of here without making that decision.
Without making that decision.
I think we can make this decision.
Okay.
But let's talk it out a little bit.
Joe's...
No, I was going to listen to you, and I was going to ask if anybody in the public wanted to make a comment.
One of the things, for context, and I can't fully explain this, but John O'Connor has indicated in our conference, in other, in the committee meetings, that we don't want this to go below $100,000, this fund, the balance of the fund. I don't know why, but we were looking at 99, because we were going to spend something or other, and we were going to be under $100,000. He was really, well, you know, we really should think, oh, we were going to give more to, this is confidential.
Yeah, don't say that.
That was fantastic.
We were going to, more to a loan, and it was going to put us under $100,000. And he was, you know, as strongly as he ever suggests, he suggested that we sort of reconsider that and maybe offer less. And what we've got is 167, so if we take $24,000 out of that, we've got 142,000. We've got 42,000, because John doesn't want to suspend that 100, and I know there's a really good reason for it. I don't know what it is, and I would probably try to talk a lot of it if somebody wanted that money. But, so it's not really 167,000 that's in there that's really, that's available for us to offer as a loan.
Good. Patrick, you've been involved in SEVEds for a long time, right?
Mm-hmm. I was.
I'd like, yeah, I'd like to hear your, if you have any thoughts.
My thoughts are that this is really going to come down to the sensibilities of the board. I can't help you. I think the work that they're doing is really essential.
Okay, that's...
But, you know, there's a pot of resources, and where it's best put to use, that's why you're here.
Well, I just know that you were involved in it for a long time, and so...
Does anybody in the public want to have any way in here as we're kind of kicking this around? Franz?
Kate, call in.
Chris?
It's okay with me to pass it on to the next meeting, too, but you would like to have another...
I kind of agree with Tim. I'd like to get there.
I'd like to do whatever we can.
Well, one more thing just to point out is that it matters, because this is really different than what SEVEds is doing. We're the last, when, you know, people go to the bank, they go to the Wiccan Dip, because there's somebody else in the process they get money from, and then they come to us for the last 20 grand or 40 or 70 they need to get a project on. And, I mean, you know, you know Peter Haves is in here twice, and that's because the first loan enabled them to take a step, and then the next one is to take another jump. And Wedstone, no, Herman Thrush is another really excellent example. I mean, they, they made the expansion and paid us back really quickly, and then made another big expansion, and they're paying that back, you know, really quickly as well. And it's just, it works, and we're the place that people come for that, when they really need to make that jump, and it's just a little bit outside what a bank would be comfortable with.
Well, you're the one that suggested the dollar, and you're suggesting, too.
Yeah.
Are you willing to budge or just split?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm going to vote for whatever, you know, if people think it's important to spend that, more important to support SEVEds than to have another 10 grand or 12 grand in this fund, then I'll certainly go mine.
Why would Tim to feel like he won something?
I do, too. I feel like he's had a rough one.
Wow. You've been whipped like crazy.
I was going to suggest split. John's ready to go all the way to meet him.
What's good with him is...
So, why don't you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There you go.
Not sure what that would look like, but it would be, I'll make a motion to, may I help you?
Oh, sure, thank you.
Oh, you're really afraid of what it is? No, I'm not. It's just, you know, the important part on the front end of this is that you're moving to place an item on the town meeting warning to accomplish the purpose you're about.
From program funds.
Unless you want me to keep going.
I wanted to make sure it started off with it's a warning item, it's not something that's voted into your budget.
Correct. Right, right. Well, with a vote of confidence, I'd like to make a motion to place a warning article for $24,000 or $2 per resident, whatever that, have we decided whether that's going to come out to, do we want to phrase it in the $2 per resident?
$2 would be 24,098, but as you can see, we've been doing 24 or 25 every ten years.
So, you can just say 24?
24,000.
From program income.
Program income, sorry.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the table to do a town meeting warning, place a warning on the town meeting for $24,000 to go to Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies, SEVEds, out of program income. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have an exciting item called Use of Fund Balance and Property Taxes.
So...
Take it away.
I want to suggest that you tackle this item the next time you address the budget so that we can bring you several different scenarios. Now that you have made all of your decisions regarding individual items, we're in a position where it's just a matter of balancing. And that's not to say, one last asterisk on that, is it's not to say that when you look at this balancing act between fund balance and taxes, that you can't go back in and readdress something in the budget if you feel like you must when you start trying to figure out whether there's enough money to fund everything you've decided. But you've got a tentative budget that you've arrived at now on the expenditure side, and what we're going to do is show you several different ways in which you could land on different combinations of taxes and fund balance to fund that. Now, I will say, based on what you did tonight, which surprised some of you along the way, and it also surprised me a little bit, that fund balance taxes conversation is not going to be as complicated as it has been in some of the years past, because you devoted fund balance substantially to the items that you've approved to be part of your budget. But if, what I'd like to do, if you can permit us to do this before you tackle that, is to take a good, careful look at staff level, at where we are, what if you just said, you know, approve it as recommended, what that would look like, and then some variation off of that so that you get some help in making that final balancing act decision about what to send to town meeting. In addition, I know that we have a very full agenda for next week, and I know that we have a need to come to you because of some of how the warning items have come along this year. We have a need to show you a draft warning, get your feedback on that, and then be able to polish it up to bring it to you in the form where, you know, there's, at the end of this process, there'll be a 15-minute meeting or less one night when we get together at the very end of January, and you approve the warning and approve the budget, because they'll be brought to you in the form where you've already said, that's what we want. But to get to the that's what we want, I think we're going to need some time, and we have a lot of other items on for next Tuesday, the 16th. So, what we'd like to ask you is to hold a special meeting two weeks from tonight on the 23rd to address this remaining budget issue and the...
And that'll be quick.
And the warning. It'll be, it'll be not as long as a regular meeting, but not as short as the following meeting. So, if we spend an hour, maybe an hour and a half together on the 23rd, we'll be in a position where we can bring you those final documents on the 30th to just approve and be done with.
David?
Well, we settled that night. What other thing before we adjourned?
Okay. Is everybody good with that?
So, there are still agenda items on the 16th that are necessary. There's no, there's no possibility to just move that, because it sounds like the 23rd and the 30th are the ones...
The 16th is the regular meeting, and it has a lot of regular business upcoming. And that's why we were looking to move the budget and town meeting warning business off to the 23rd and the 30th, if that works for you.
And you think, at this point, you think both would be the best?
Yes.
Okay.
And we understand that's an imposition.
I figured we ought to have a meeting every weekend, every Wednesday, town meeting.
I think we were worried. We'd get lucky and...
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
We could have skipped tonight. Yeah, I just wanted to provide, once, now this is all over, some clarity of at least what is known currently about the school tax. The Brownborough Town School Board, the elementary school board, we approved our budget, and the tax rate, we, it's up, I think, $111,000, but because of the way it's calculated, the tax rate is going to be the same for the town schools. The high school, I think tomorrow afternoon at 2 o'clock...
It's going to be a big one.
Is going to be trying to figure theirs out, and that will add to what the taxpayers in Brownborough pay above the, you know, what we pay, I think it's $1.62, which is what it was last year, for just the elementary budget. The high school budget gets added on to our budget to arrive at the total homestead tax rate. The state has, as the Treasury sent a letter around early in the, earlier in the month, late, as usual, as is always the case, that they're anticipating if the average increase, tax increase across the state is between 3 or, I'm not sure, it's 3% or 3.5%, that the state tax rate would be nine cents higher. The, if this budget still go up, five of that, I think, or maybe six of that, is, or 5.5 of that, is the 2.5%. or 5.5 of that is the 2.5%. Everybody's budgets go up that much, then obviously, that's going to add a nickel to it. So, it's really hard to tell what's going to happen. There's going to be, you know, there'll be additional money for the high school because they have a higher per pupil cost there because of all the programs that we all insist that our schools have. And, what comes from the state will probably be a few cents on top of that, but we don't know for sure. So, it's going to be up, but it's not, we'll see, but I don't think it's going to be 9%. People are working really hard to... But, the, as this is a little bit partisan, well, it's not partisan, but it's a little bit more purely political, but the reason that the high school budget's up so much is because Act 46 included this provision that reduced the number of what was called phantom students. If a school had 200 students and for some reason housing development burned down or something awful happened, 20 kids left, rather than have to try and do their budget based on 180 kids and not be able to keep the school open, they were allowed to gradually remove those kids over a course of years. That gradual part is now gone, and the full impact of it has hit the high school, and it was a significant, I'm not going to say a number because I don't recall exactly, but it was a lot of students that are no longer figured in there, so they're not keeping the state, the school's not going to get money for them. And, the other thing is because Vernon has voted to withdraw from the high school board district because they want to retain their choice, which they couldn't under Act 46, they can't fully assess, and Franz, if you know more about this or clarify this, please do, they can't fully assess all of those, the vernicates as well. So, those are the two main drivers of that budget increase.
One of the key drivers of the tax rate for the school part of the budget is the number of equalized students, which is calculated based on the number of students in the school, but has other components to it such as adjustments for poverty and proportion of students who were preschoolers compared to regular schoolers. What happened with the high school this year, as David said, was that these phantom students disappeared. That number was about 72 students, just gone.
I couldn't believe it was that big, that's why I didn't want to say that.
Yeah, so, there were another 120 students from Vernon who were taken out, so that, you know, this had a very large, this was like a sixth of the student population at the high school. The Vernon students don't really have a big effect because although their funding source was taken away from the state funding formula, the funding source for them now becomes their tuition that they have to pay to the Union High School District. So, the Vernon students aren't such, I mean, I think there's some effect from that, and I don't know how larger and what direction, but the big effect is the phantom students going away. I'm not sure how they got so many phantom students. I don't really understand that part of the process, but it meant that a significant number of the students who would have brought funding from the state are no longer counted because of this provision in Act 46. And, the, you know, the high school budget's being rewritten probably right at this moment because at last night's budget meeting of the full high school board, a revised budget was presented to the board for the first time. It was their first look at it, and it was met with a lot of resistance from community members based on cuts that were being made. And, the sentiment of the community members at that meeting was, put these items back in, which were, number one was the Diversity Coordinator, and the other was called the PEAK Program, which helps students with behavioral issues and other relationship-type issues to remain in school and get educated. So, everybody agrees that these were two worthwhile programs and positions. There was some disagreement about how best to provide those, fill those needs for the town, but the, I mean, I've been pretty much the only person other than the school board at all these school board meetings, and last night, there must have been 50 or 60 people who made very strong points about retaining those things in the budget. If both of those, the PEAK Program and the Diversity Coordinator, were included in the budget, I believe they were bumping right up against the level of taxation per equalized student that would then cause the state to add a penalty amount onto the tax formula. So, there is going to be a special high school board meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock, and they have to, because their budget meeting for the voters is February 13th, they have to, in order to warn that, and that's set in stone, that was adopted by last year's, last year's annual meeting, so that can't be changed, and in order to warn it properly, they have to vote tomorrow on a final budget to present to the voters on February 13th. So, a lot of stuff up in the air. I feel pretty sure they'll bring it in under the penalty figure, but what the size of the increase will be is, it's just hard to say at this point.
The only thing I'd add is just, if you think about the process that we've been through for the last month or so, they're doing the same thing, just much more compressed, very difficult decisions having to do with what services they provide to kids. So, it's going to, people want services and they have to be paid for them.
Okay.
Thank you both for that.
Yeah, that was a good update.
It's not a positive one, but...
But, it was a thorough one.
An update nonetheless.
Is there any further business to discuss this evening? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Meeting is over.
Do you feel like we're kind of... kidding?
I hope so.